By the time I realized that.
You good? Okay. I'd like to call to order the zoning board appeals meeting for the town of Lakeville. This is Thursday, May 19th. It's posted for seven. It's a little after seven. Call it 7:06, 7:07. First agenda item. We do have a petition before us, a Solana hearing. So let me open that up. The Lakeville zoning board appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Laws 40A as amended, will be conducting a public hearing on Thursday, May 19th in the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street upon the petition of Leonardo Solana for a special permit under 6.1.3 and 7.4 is requesting to add a 20 by 22 foot garage that would be within the required setbacks on a pre-existing non-conforming lot as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property is at 29 Pilgrim Road. The applicant and the sort of documents have been viewed by the planning board by appointment or on the town of Lakeville zoning board appeals page. So we have a petition from Mr. Solana to add a one-car garage, dimensions 20 by 22, at 29 Pilgrim Road. Is Mr. Solana here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, why don't you tell us what you're looking to do and then I'll read a couple of memos into the record and we'll...
Do you need these gloves to podium?
Yeah, if you go to the podium. There's a microphone there. They're filming this, so...
Yeah, what I want to do is build a... It's supposed to be 22 by 16. I think that's off a little bit.
Yeah, we posted based off of what was on the petition you submitted. So you put it for a 20 by 22, but you're going to be doing... What did you say?
Twenty... 22 by 16, because...
16 feet wide?
16 feet wide, yes. It's only a one-car garage. I saw the... when I originally did it, it was 40 by 22, but there wasn't... I didn't want to take too much of the land even because I want to be able to drive all back, so... These are cottages on church or shores. And it's going to be a... I don't know if you guys have a copy of these?
You have a copy.
27?
Whatever was...
Yeah, it's right here. I have 25 feet and 8 inches from the property line corner to the property line. And it's going to be right in the corner of the house. There's a side door in there because me and my wife were getting older. We want to be able to go into the house and take the groceries out or everything. Because we're going to be... That's going to be a permanent house forever, so we're going to sell the big house because the kids are all grown up and going out of the house.
So it'll be your primary residence?
It'll be my primary residence, yes, sir. And it's just a garage. There's not going to be any living space or anything there. Just a one-car garage for us to be able to go drive in and go into the house. In the area, we... I mean, everybody has a garage. They're only like a foot away from property line, some of them. So I don't know if you want to weigh those out or not.
Yeah, a lot of the structures down there have been around for a while. We do not meet the setbacks, but we seem to take each one on their own as submitted, so... Let me read a couple of memos as it has gone before. A few other departments into the record. Planning board sent a memo to the board of appeals after Thursday, April 28th meeting. The planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the board of appeals. The board has no comments regarding this petition. We also have a memo from the board of health dated May 5th. "We received a copy of the petition for hearing for 29 Pilgrim Road, providing the garage is only a garage and there is no room above that garage that could be used as habitable space." And the board of health has no objection to the proposed garage. If you should have any further questions, feel free to contact this office. So as you stated, it looks like you're just looking to put up a one-car garage?
Yeah, I did some plans right there on the... I only have one coffee, but...
Okay, just let him... Okay. See you, Chris. And it looks like your issue... The only issue you have is the setback that you're going to be impeding into, so at this point, we'll open it up to other board members to make any comments or if they have any questions. Steve, you on quest?
I have a question. You got the dimensions down to the nearest inch? Where'd you get them from? I'm just curious.
I had the property because I put addition on the back, as you can see on the plans, two years ago.
Okay.
And I had it all surveyed and...
It was surveyed, but it was...
They have to be surveyed in order to do the addition on the back.
Well, the problem I have is I know Mr. Esposito, and he is an engineer, he's not a surveyor. And my question would be... Because I'm a surveyor. I know that area quite well. And the property lines are not where they appear to be sometimes. And I don't have a problem with you putting a garage. I just want you to be sure that it's on your property.
Oh, yes, no doubt about it.
Well...
I mean, I have my neighbor here and he can see, tell where the line is. I mean, I know what you're saying. I had a survey.
Okay, but the problem is that's in with a surveyor, which means, to me, it means nothing.
Or even though when they approved the addition last year, two years ago?
I didn't. I wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't here?
Nope. But I, you know, you've got to draw the line someplace. We have to... We need... If you're going to build something that close to the lot line, we need... You should have a site plan that's stamped by a surveyor.
Right. Well, I'm still going to have... I'm still going to have over nine feet to the property line.
I don't know that. Hopefully, you're going to invest... That garage is going to cost you $20,000 or $25,000.
Prices today is...
$30,000.
Yeah, probably something like that, yeah.
What if your property line is down? Who do you think it is?
Tear it down. I'm 100% that it is in my property because of the line between our neighbors and the fence, the fence there.
Okay.
It has been there forever. And like I said, when we had a survey with... I forgot his name.
Well, the one that stamped this?
Yeah.
He's an engineer, he's not a surveyor.
Oh. Well, he didn't do it. He had somebody do it. I mean, I paid him, but...
Well, I'd like to... Board of Health has a... They started to get the same way. I'd like to see it. If you have... If you're showing property lines and distances of property lines, have a surveyor stamp on it. First thing, don't come to hire me because I can't do it anyway. There are two or three...
You're probably too expensive anyways.
I am, probably. But there's two or three, you know, surveyors who are just local people who are really good and they would gladly do it. But I'm almost a...
I mean, they put the fence on everything on the property line.
Okay, then he should be able... Whoever did it should be able to stamp it.
Okay.
Can I raise a question, please?
Go ahead, Jerry.
Shouldn't the permits calling for a 22 by 20 special permit, right? 22 by 20 structure? No, it's down to 16. Well, I think with everything, it was submitted as 20 by 20. Shouldn't we have it amended to reflect what? I mean, I'll do it as actual calling for it. I think we're safe in this position because he's actually shrinking it. So the intent hasn't really changed. It's less intrusive than what it would normally be. So I'm not so much hung up on that. I think the bigger question is to... To Jeff's point is that... No fault of yours. I mean, this is...
My answer is... I mean, we do have a fence on the property line between me and the neighbor, so...
Yeah, well, here's the issue. As much as I may know where I think my neighbor's property is or it may be a stone wall or maybe a fence that's been there for 20, 30, 40 years, I'm sure Jeff can tell you how many times they've gone out and surveyed it after the fact and realized somebody messed it up or didn't do it the wrong... Or did it the wrong way, so... It's... Trust me, it's as much for your protection.
No, but there wasn't a survey. The engineer did the plans for the septic tanks and septic system and everything, and they did a line, but they also sent a surveyor to survey the line.
Surveyor, somebody different than the engineer came out? Did someone different?
Well, the engineer was for the septic system and everything, but I had to hire a surveyor from Carver. I think he was from Carver. I forgot his name. It was two years ago.
Sounds like if he came out and did that, he should have those plans and it's probably just a matter of going and getting them stamped.
Everything I submitted to the town, the addition on the back.
Then it may be there. You probably just need to go and grab those.
Check with Nathan and...
Yeah. I would start there because obviously that'd be the easiest route. If there's already one out there, just grab it and then you're good at least.
Yeah, because I remember I paid like $600 to have a survey then, but the engineer had nothing to do with the survey at all. I mean, I had to do both. Because I could have set new septic system in and it was on race above property.
Let me move on from the survey question just for a second because if we get to a point where that's all you need, we may just need to continue and have you get that.
That's fine.
But do folks have other questions on this? Let's put the survey aside for a second, assuming that it's correct.
That was my biggest concern as well. There was no proposed setback line. I mean, we could make the condition. We grant this that, you know, it's not to exceed, say, eight foot or something like that, but then as billed required for the building department at completion or even prior to pouring, you know, setting forms up, having shooters. I'm sure we could work something in.
But there's nothing drastic we see other than the fact that we've brought up really to make sure...
I agree with John. We want to make sure it's on his property. But if he had... I agree with the conversation. If you had somebody out there recently...
What, two years ago?
...had their system and it's just a matter of him going out and...
Just two years ago, okay?
Yeah.
If he did the original survey and determined the property lines...
Yes, he did.
He obviously located the house.
Yes.
And so he can generate...
Yeah, he... Well, he gave it to the engineer so they could do the plan. I have all the plant... Plans in here.
Right. But... You know what I'm coming from?
I understand.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
No.
We have folks in the audience, and since this is the only petition, I'm assuming people may want to speak or against or make comments in general. Does anyone have anything they would like to... If you do, please come on up and podium. You can sit down, sir. Just state your name and your address.
Julian K, 27 Pilgrim. Where is this going? Where are you putting it? I'm not going to look out my window and see this correct.
Fourth bench, where's going to be looking at?
I don't want to see it anywhere.
It's going to be on your side over here.
It's going to be in my lake view? Like, when I look out that way?
No, your house is over here.
Okay.
It's going to be right here in the corner.
So where does it start from your house?
It starts, you know where the door is?
Yep, that's where the garage starts and start.
It's going to be a...
It's a go-to the back.
You're going to go from there but forward.
Forward in front of your house?
Well, a little bit in front. It's going to be a...
If you stop and take a shot of it?
Yeah, here you go.
Ma'am, we have extra stuff here. Take a look at it.
Okay, this is... Okay, so my house is right here. So that's where I'm going to look at. This is the garage. And this is the start of his house.
This is the structure's floor.
Yeah, so when I look out my window, my door, I'm going to see his garage. And he's... How much feet does he have here? I mean, we're literally right here. You know, I mean, I look at the lake every morning. I see the sun and I say, I don't want to...
This is around the lake. The lake, you wouldn't hear. The lake is on the other side.
This is Pilgrim.
This is Pilgrim. The long one is right here. So when I look out my window, I see way through... I see way to the park. And I don't want to see this. I mean, it's already bad enough that this is added and the deck is batted and now it's right in my kitchen. It's like, Jesus, it doesn't have any land left. You know, this garage thing, it's... So this is what's down the line. How high does that... How high is it?
What's the height of the peak, sir?
Eight feet high and then you've got the roof line. Probably another four feet, so it's...
Probably about 12 feet.
Was it a... Was it...
I'm against it.
What is it? 14, so it's seven, so it's probably six and one. Two and two.
Equally long.
Yep.
And the... You know, frusses? Probably frusses or stick. It's going to be...
Four foot?
Probably five inch.
Okay, one foot, five feet.
That's five feet.
Yeah. So you're looking at two or three feet up. So it's going to be...
Well, wherever it is, I mean, it's right next to my house attached.
Okay.
In the...
They're still going to... Yeah, forward a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, but according to that, you're going forward. Wherever my house is...
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah.
You've still got all that view of the lake, right? You have to build a road.
Yeah, not from my house.
Oh, not from the back.
Not from my road.
From the back? You can't see because my house is there anyway.
No, not from the back. I'm saying from in my house.
And then you have the garage, thanks, Thor. You know, you know, needed garage. Needed garage is right here. I'm... Ma'am?
That you should have been playing.
Ma'am? Ma'am, excuse me. Do you have another question? You've made the point that you're... Obviously, you're opposed to it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
I'm also concerned about drainage.
Well, I have a great drainage. We talked about that.
Right, right. So better to that, keep your garage.
That takes a day.
Yeah, well, it's...
And I bet the hose is already there and it's all you... Put in the face of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I help?
Absolutely. Come on up.
I'm Michael King, 27 Pilgrim Road. Our next disputed property line that you're talking about there. That fence isn't the property line. It was never surveyed. That fence was already up when we bought the house and everything was already there. That's just a matter of a bunch of fence pieces leaned up against the shed that was there.
That's all problem now, right?
Yeah, hopefully.
But there's...
That's another. To follow up on what you happened to have said and what you had said. The application is for a 20 by 22. Am I correct?
Yes.
It has not been amended yet to make it back to the 16 that he's talking about building.
Sir, it doesn't have to be. If you want to move on to another subject...
Well, no, I'm following up on this because the difference is if he goes ahead and builds it 20 by 22 because that's what the application says and he's never actually had it surveyed, I'm telling you, it's going to be right up against the property line. And it's not going to be enough room to really build the fence drain. Every time it rains now, since he's had his septic system built and the neighbor next door to him, everything's come in. Every time it rains, everything floods in, into my yard. My yard gets all the runoff because they built up all the septic systems and everything comes down this way. If he builds that garage there, it's going to come in. It's going to come right through my yard every time it rains. It never used to do that. Now it comes in every time it rains. That's my... That is my main complaint. Granted, my wife does not like to... Isn't going to want to look out a window because if you start where you're talking about and you end where you're talking about, Leonard, you know what I mean, up to here? If you're not going to be able to see out the window, you're not going to see the lake anymore because we've already looked at it. We know how far out 25 feet goes from the corner that he's looking at. That's my wife's main complaint. She doesn't want to look out. I mean, it's already taken off most of its property line with the house now.
Mr. Solana, he's addressing the board. You don't need to...
I just want to know about this. We already talked about it.
You understand what I'm saying though? Because if you go... If he ends up going 20 feet because that's what his initial ping is, it's going to come right up against the line and we're going to end up getting everything.
Okay, thank you. Chris, what I want to do is just have everybody come up and then we can discuss.
Okay, so I'm going to say no at this point.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak? Just comment?
Lee Breenzo, 25 Pilgrim Road. Well, I also agree. It's a no. As far as he's been... I don't want to... We've never met. We've been there since 1942. Looking at that, my grandfather built it. I don't know if you even know way back, Mike Breenzo and police force and building the senior center, the old one, and everything else with the town. But it means a lot to me, our home and the view. We were the first house there. And so it's not only sentimental to me, of course, and my family, but also just waking up and looking out our house and the way we purposely set up the house, my grandfather did and built it, to look at the water. And now all we're going to look at is this huge structure. And that's all we're going to say.
Mr. Solana?
And that's all we're going to say. We go to the street. And my parents are disabled. I'm disabled. And it's not, you know, ideal. Obviously, there's the water issue and the drainage issues. And it's just so much of the property. He's gone... I mean, and we haven't minded. We haven't said anything. Like I said, we've never met. And he's just added on and on and on and on and on from, you know, and not a lot looks finished, to be honest with you visually, to my eyes. And I don't know about the permits on any of that. I don't know if you got them all, if they've all were done kindly and correct. I don't know. But there's just a lot of... I mean, there's some pictures we had taken. And it's true about the fence because being the first house there, obviously, I can notice. And it's just an add. And no, I can't even imagine not being able to see the water. It would literally kill me. Kill me. I mean, if you had a heart, really, and I'm asking us to even go further back. I mean, you pretty much had every speck of that property taken. But if you could push it back and you're saying, you know, you're elderly and all that, and that's why you have a door on the side, why would you add a door to the front?
Excuse me, ma'am. You really should be talking more. You guys should...
My no, no.
As far as the permits...
He's saying as far as the using that door because they're elderly. It's always been there since that house was built, his house. He added a door to the front. I don't know why he'd add a door right around the corner if, you know, he wanted to use that shelter for groceries. Doesn't make sense to me to add a door in the front. I just like to tell the truth.
Okay. If you do want to check on any of the permits, the building department would be able to clarify that for you.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Please comment, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
11:35 Pilgrim Road. I'm just a square, but my family's been there since the 40s. I have two questions. What exactly is the... Do I believe is it the zoning or is it the conservation that they only allow 25% of most being impervious? So what percentage of that lot is being taken up by the house and the proposed garage? Is it over 25%? Over 25% of the lot is being taken up by impervious services? So I know that... I don't know whether it's you folks or one of the boards that don't like it more than 25% impervious. That would add to the lot of problems.
It's a restriction in the town. Not a matter of whether we like it or not. You can't have... You can only have so much of your property.
Being impervious, right, right. So I don't know what percentage... If this proposed garage goes through, just what percentage would that be? The other thing is I just don't know how far back from the street is that in footwise, that's all I want to know. How many?
20 feet.
20 feet from that?
From the street.
I tell you what, that's... Thank you.
Any additional comments? Chris, I know you had...
Yeah, I was just going to make the suggestion. If you'd be willing to slide it back so it's even with the front of your house so you're not starting anybody's view, I think that would go a long way with your neighbors. Would you be willing to do that?
Probably have a big fireplace there.
Yeah, if you build around the fireplace and jog and flash it. I've seen it down. I see it down all the time. So it is dual.
And I have a window on each side.
See, I need one window, but they're losing their view.
Yeah, I lost my view, you know, also with the neighbor next door put a garage and block mail. The only window I have in the kitchen looking to the lake and the guy across the street in the corner, they have trees. You know, it's like a wall of trees and blocks on my view from the lake.
Is that the lake side that you put this on?
No, the opposite side.
The opposite side? So you're not really losing your view of the lake?
Yeah, well, I have a garage right in front of me on the other side of, you know, looking towards the lake. It used to be a carport and the guy that bought the house, he closer there, they made a garage out of it. So it blocked my view from the lake. But and all the trees across the street in the corner, it's those bushes there that they make a wall. He's got a whole corner all around and it blocks everybody's view.
Those have been there for years.
I know. But it shouldn't be because I blocked everybody's view.
Mr. Solana, again, just... Everyone should be addressing the board, just for the...
And I know this isn't something most people end up coming to zoning board meetings, but everything else has got to come through the board. No conversations between...
Sorry, I just had to clarify because I've been there for everybody the longest in my family. And what he's discussing is Mr. This is property who built it. And that carport and just putting the wood around it and fixing the wood that was dilapidated on it has been the same forever, since like 1949. I don't know, something outrageous like that. Sorry, that isn't true. It's not blocking. It's been there.
Thank you. Jerry?
Just one point of clarification, Mr. Solana. On the hand drawn drawing, right? What I'm looking at is it says 16 by 22 for the action.
Here's...
But you do not want what again for the... What's the size of the garage you're proposing today?
16 by 22.
16 by 22?
16 wide, wide and long.
I believe the application itself is just filled up incorrectly. So if we were to approve it at some point, we would make that clear and as part of the approval process that it would only be 16 by 22 if we were to get there, so...
I was going to think along the same line, Chris, if there was some way to modify this, either push it back or some policies, I'll party to make that the best solution.
Okay.
I think John's point of having it surveyed and then knowing the percentage of lot coverage and then throwing the roof drainage in as well and knowing where that's going to be located and knowing that it's going to be part of it.
Well, the drainage is going to go to between me and Mike's property.
Yeah.
And I really have the pipe. I have heavy equipment there.
Where's it running to though?
Where it runs is out to the street.
Out to the street?
No, I mean, they get three feet down, two feet wide. I'm going to put the stone hole in it. You know, I'm going to put the corrugated pipe in it, the black pipe.
And then run it out? I don't think you can run it out...
Well, not just to be like, you know, it's going to run from the top all the way to the front. So all the water is going to go to each of the stone and into the pipe, run down into the stone like it's French rain.
But it has to go someplace. Yeah. It can either go to air or it can go into a dry well.
You know, slowly when you have the stone around it.
I'm going to rely on our professional... Not that everyone else is, but Jeff, what's the best way for us to confirm that his addition is going to have minimal, if he at all, impact water wise to the neighbors? Because obviously, this isn't unique to you. This is an issue with a lot of problems.
It's the same issue. We've got to stop basically, you know, permitting it without knowing exactly where it's going to go. What you need to do is to get a bone bracer in existing conditions, locate everything on the property and put it on the piece of, you know, on the plan. And then go hire Mr. Esposito or whoever you want. And I want to see if he's going to do that drain and then he's going to put what you need at the end of it. You need some place to dump it into a leaching pit or the water. If you don't, what will happen during a 25 or a 50-year storm? The trench will fill up and he'll be coming and asking me what the problem is.
Yeah, we all have water. I mean, they pump the water out to the street every day. I pump the water out to the street from underneath the house because nobody has foundations.
Okay.
Everything is...
Jeff, let me jump in for a second. So I... Unfortunately, what's happened is over the years as people have built up more and more along with the Lakewood properties, water has become more and more of an issue. more and more along with the lakefront properties, water has become more and more of an issue. And you're coming before us at a time when it's getting to the point where we really need to do our due diligence to make sure it has as minimal impact as possible. Yes, does it stink for you? Because probably ten years ago, maybe even five years ago, the board wasn't as strict in looking for that. It does, but unfortunately, we can't say, well, the problem is, well, we did it for somebody else, we didn't make them jump through those hurdles five years ago, so we can't make you. We're just, in effect, making the problem worse and worse, so that's why we're going to need you probably do a little due diligence.
Um, I mean, the garage is not going to affect the water at all because the garage is going to be over to the right. Look, the, all that he's saying is the property line coming down. And, uh, we don't, you only had water one time, it was, we had a lot of rain and, I mean, it, uh...
Well, if it's not going to affect it at all, then when you go through the, what, you know, Mr. Yonquist has suggested, engineer's going to tell us this isn't going to have any impact, it's not going to do anything. And if the engineer tells us that, it's a stamp.
They designed the septic system and everything.
They'll tell us and then we'll go with that.
So, you, you are increasing the impervious area within the lot, so it does add to the stormwater condition, so yes, you are creating more hazard. So, we'd like you to address it.
Okay.
I, I am going to put a French drain in.
Okay.
From the, uh, oh, from the back.
We just want you to have someone check it to say that's going to work.
So, put on a plot plan, show us where the proposed location of the structure is going to be on the plot plan, show us where your French drain is going to be, show us the setbacks, show us the neighbors are going to have their view still. And then, and then, so I'd like to continue it pending a plot plan. I'll make a motion to continue pending a plot plan submitted by the applicant. Show him what we have.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? How are we looking for May?
Uh, right now, there's nothing, but there might be two.
Excuse me, June.
There's nothing right now.
I missed the April meeting, this is, this is my April meeting. Nothing in June right now.
There, there might be two. Trying to make it, unfortunately.
Well, we're going to, it sounds like we're going to have one. Are you confident you'll be able to get those, uh, plans together by the next meeting? Okay. So.
So, I'll have to come back to the next meeting?
You'll have to come back to the next meeting, yeah. I would, I would also, not that we're saying you need to, but I would also consider seeing if there's some way to maybe push that back a little bit, you know, maybe you give up a little bit.
I understand.
And that way it makes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I might have suggested meet with the neighbors and make sure that the location of it's going to be satisfactory and crossing the fence is the best way to handle the situation right now, so that'll help you a lot, especially next month when we all come back here.
Okay.
It's June sixteenth, if you want to announce that.
So, the motion is to continue to June sixteenth. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. See you on the sixteenth.
Thank you.
All right. Do not have any other hearings? You have a little bit of housekeeping here to do. Next agenda item, reorganization of the board. So, this is on here, um, because we had a board member resign. Okay. Laura Klein just resigned, she's been elected to planning board and she decided not to spread herself within, so with her resignation, we do not have a clerk anymore, so that's what the reorganization is. What we need to do is get clerk and we can do a couple of things. We can see Jerry would like to move up from assistant clerk to clerk, and then we can put someone in as assistant clerk, which kind of makes logical sense to me unless anyone else has another, um, suggestion. If not, someone can make the motion for Jerry to be become clerk and we'll move on to assistant clerk.
Just, can I ask a quick question?
I mean, if it, if it has to do with you not moving up to clerk, I'm going to say no, but.
It is a, having you move up to clerk. If we run into situations like we did with me traveling, right, and the meeting minutes are not prepared for me to sign off on, what's the potential risk here?
We could put an assistant clerk in place who can take care of that.
An assistant clerk will do it, yeah.
Okay.
There is a backup plan.
All right.
The town, town hall doesn't, the town hall doesn't stop if, if you're traveling, so it won't work.
No, I mean, if I'm not physically available within the timeframe or the window that she has.
Yes, she would just reach out to be assistant clerk.
Okay, fair enough. So.
I'll make a motion to have Jerry move up to clerk.
Good second.
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
I'll take assistant clerk then.
I was just going to say.
I make a motion.
Hey, don't look so happy, huh?
I'll second.
She thought you would avoid it, you thought you were going to avoid it.
No, I told her if he did, I would, so I am.
Okay, so you're making a motion for?
I make the motion. I'll second the motion.
Second motion for Chris Carmichael to become assistant clerk. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Um, in re, oh, I guess I'll take this under, uh, new business. Uh, we have some minutes, March seventeenth and April twenty-first that we need to review and approve. Kathy did send them out ahead of time, so.
I need an excuse for, I was in attendance, I wasn't in attendance. Which one? March seventh. Neither was I.
Okay. Either of the Chris's want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, this is, this is submitted. Second.
Okay, we have first and second on the seventeenth. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Two abstentions and any opposed? No one's opposed. April twenty-first, I am going to abstain because I was not at that meeting, but the four of you were, so.
I abstained as well.
You opposed, that's true, you weren't, you were sure, I saw him in the input.
Yeah.
Three of us, yeah, the three of us were.
Okay, so, anyone want to make a motion to approve those? I'll make a motion to second. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Abstention, two abstentions, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any old business, Kathy?
No.
No? Okay, new business. We do.
I have one thing.
What we should. You're going to jump in front of mine?
Okay, you go first.
Go right ahead. I don't listen, I, I respect my elders, go ahead, sir.
What we should do going forward, when we have these little bitty lots out in Clarksure, this bit, whatever shores, what we should do is make a point when they follow the plan, make, you know, have a, have a, have a real plan with you.
Well, we talked about that at the last meeting.
Right, yeah.
And then we kind of, you guys kind of walked.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a walkman on this one.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm under.
For these, for these small lots, okay, when, when the applicants come in, we'll recommend that they absolutely have a full survey plan showing the addition in the property lines.
Yeah.
And that if they choose not to, then this might, you know, they might be sent back out to, to do.
Yeah, we could put that right on the application.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, we, we should.
Put it on the application. If, if it, if it, if the property lines are in question or anything.
Right.
It has to be.
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know whether it's in question or not, but I think for all these small lots, it absolutely should be.
So, what we want to do is, it sounds like what we want to do is basically, because we can't force them to do it, but we strongly recommend a, I mean, we can force them when they're here, we can't force them to actually get it done for the meeting.
Well, well, we can require that, and that was going to be what I was, wanted to talk to you about, is updating your rules and regs as well as the forty-B rules and regs, so that we can put it in there that you absolutely have to have a survey site plan showing addition, et cetera, if, you know.
I think the only reason we've kind of not taken that hard of a stance, and I'm in favor, but I think a lot of these issues, you know, becomes, well, why do I have to do it and this, I did it, we force it. The only, my only reservation is there are situations where we're probably really not going to need it, right? I mean, if someone.
Right, putting a deck on.
Putting a deck on and, and it's way away from everything anyway and you can tell it's obviously impervious, you're not even close, so.
I agree, there's, there's, there's ones that you can read and it's a no-brainer, but this, I think if we maybe further go and say if you're within ten foot of a property line or close to a setback or, or dense area, we should require.
I, I can craft, I can craft, based on our discussions, I'll craft something that kind of.
Highly recommended.
Yeah, that kind of meets that standard and we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay. No, I agree, because this is only going to, like I said, this is going to kind of become more and more of an issue. And if I'm on that side, I'm probably saying the same thing.
Right, and I don't want to cost a guy thousands of dollars.
Yeah, I just, you know, my guy did it two years ago and now all of a sudden, and we weren't as strict, but every single one of these.
We were fighting between sixteen and twenty and twenty and twenty-two, yeah, so.
I cannot see spending thirty, forty thousand dollars to build a garage and then all of a sudden it's within a foot of the property line and coming back to me and asking me for forgiveness. I, I see it all the time, I see it all the time, I tell, you know, I warned you. That's it.
I know you wanted to talk a little bit, Mark, I just want to address one other piece of new business. I believe, well, back to, um, the board resigning, which means we are now short one regular member. Um, and we're also short one member overall in aggregate. So, we, I think Kathy did send up the, Board of Selectmen did advertise for people to submit. We did get, um, a resume, we'll call it, for someone who was interested, I don't know if everyone, anyone or everyone's had a chance to look at that yet, if it seems like someone we would want to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to appoint for, that, you know, that person will become an associate realistically, I would assume that's what they'd appoint you to.
We got to move somebody up to a member too then, right, John?
We do have to move someone up to a member, so we only have one associate here. How you feeling, Chris, you ready?
Was Chris on or, or she? You guys both?
No, you guys all got appointed at the same time, so. So, would you, are you interested in signing on up?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion is, keep in mind, select board appoints, we're just making a recommendation. So, the motion is that the board votes for, recommends that the selectmen appoint, uh, Chris Campo as a regular member of the zoning board.
Right.
We're not making a recommendation on the candidate yet.
No, we're going to talk about that in a second, so. All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now to the candidate. Any thoughts, comments?
My concern is that we have another engineer on the board, so.
Or a guy from Boston.
I'm leaving.
Guy from Boston?
Yes.
I think that's the bigger problem.
No, I'm just kidding around, that's a joke.
Yeah, I know, I know. These meetings are, meetings aren't recorded. I was actually interested, of all, nothing personal, guys, I was actually interested in his recommendation and of course he didn't, okay, yeah.
Wouldn't be, uh, worthwhile then, invite him in and just meet him face to face?
We can do whatever you guys would like to do.
I think, I think that's kind of like how every candidate's been before, right? So.
We've done that in the past, too. I mean, there's no rush, we have a full board, um, or we have enough or full board selecting to appoint. Chris will have a full one, and we still have two associates, so, well, yeah, we still have two associates, right?
Well, we have one associate versus she, and then we got to hire another associate.
Okay.
So, yeah, we could invite him to the next meeting, but we do that.
Yeah. Do that. Kathy, you can do that and, I've never heard. All right, well, now you got it, you got time to read it because we're going to bring this talk to us.
I get it, I get it.
All right, Mark, you got our undivided attention, I don't know how long you'll keep it, but.
Yeah, no, uh, well, one very quick thing, we got a bill from, uh, for some envelopes, but you guys just want to make a motion to have me sign all your bills?
I'm going to make a motion, which the chair usually doesn't do, but because if it's not you, it's probably going to fall on me.
Too much.
Give Mark the authority to take care of signing for the, the very minimal administrative office expenses.
Oh, I don't know, you could have a lot more.
Any, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great responsibility.
Is that on your pocket?
Listen, you can only do so much, I don't think they give us more than a hundred dollars if you have to talk about it. You live near, you can afford it.
Yeah, yeah. So, moving here, buying three houses here.
You mentioned something about, um.
One for the dog, one for the wife.
Do you want to say anything about forty-B regs or?
Uh, well, yeah, well, I haven't really reviewed your regs, forty-B and, and your regular rules and regs, um, but if you'd like, I will look at them for the next meeting and we can pick one or both, uh, two, two, okay, we'll pick one.
Yeah, one at a time.
One at a time. Do you have?
Any preference on?
Yeah, that's, any preference.
I, I, I have to stay out of this discussion.
Yeah, no, you don't say anything.
I don't say anything. Mark, you know why I don't.
He does some work in that field.
I see.
What do you think, Chris? Any preference on the regular regs or the forty-B first?
I do forty-B.
No, whatever, whatever you want.
You want forty-B first?
I love forty-B.
You got it, forty-B first.
Forty-B is.
It's the days of Don Foster, guys, so.
Don Foster, yeah, and I swore I'd never be sitting where he was sitting. At that point. I swore too much then, I guess so.
You can still reorganize the board.
I trust me, you don't think anybody's going to.
I would love to, you for chairman.
Yeah, that's the problem. Okay, so we'll do forty-B and then depending on what's on the docket in June, we'll keep an eye on it, we may kick it out, but we have some other stuff.
I understand.
We don't want to be at eleven o'clock in that.
Come on. It's a good time.
I have to be in the world in five minutes, but.
Any other business? Next meeting, June sixteenth, we know there's this one petition. Can I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at whatever time you'd like.